All right. Yeah, it's San Piam who called the meeting to the overall election by United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right, thank you for coming this evening. The first item is our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
We have additions to that. So we're going to put the other in joints from Pam Blau, the one for 500, we're going to put that as IC. And then I left the plans from the architect, and we're going to put that as Q.
We're going to put that where?
I think Q.
Oh, Q.
Okay, any other additions or corrections? If there's none, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda with the two additions.
Okay, we have a motion, support?
Support.
A motion to support to approve the consent agenda with two additions to the agenda. Any question? Okay, all in favor?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Stephen, yes.
Stephen, yes.
Stephen, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, citizens' comments, would anyone in the audience like to discuss any issue? There will have a period at the end of the meeting. None? Okay, next one is overhead streetlights. They sent out letters to the five communities that we share street lamps with. Ira Township responded, they know we've had long-term agreement with them. China Township called, let me a phone message, and no problem. Columbus Township turned us down again, so I'm almost ready to talk to Edison about switching those lights over to their.
So what do you want to do then? I'm thinking we need to spell and then send these collections.
You know, that's a good idea. Yeah, I haven't heard from Lennox Township. In our light at the quarter, Runcity Highway and Coming Line, it's shared by four townships. Casco, Lennox, Chesterfield, and Ira, I haven't heard from them, so I will call Chesterfield.
Lennox is usually pretty good, like when I saw the invoices.
Yeah, I know they are.
Lennox and Ira, okay, right away.
But Columbus, if they never agreed to this in the first place, then we'd have no light to stand on.
You mean Columbus?
Columbus, and what did I say?
You said Columbus.
No, Columbus. If we approached them and they declined to go in with this, and we went ahead with the streetlights anyway, and their name is not on any contract or any agreement, even a gentleman's agreement, then I don't think that we can bill them for anything.
Do you know, like, how, that was a long time ago?
It would, yeah.
Well, I went up and I talked to their supervisor several weeks ago, and he said, "I'll bring before the board," and turned it right on.
And they turned it right down?
Yeah, well, I sent them the request to be put on the budget, and I got an email back saying they refused to do it.
Tell them we're turning off the streetlight.
Maybe you need to go to the media.
Yeah, problems are being seen, how it's ours.
So?
Well, it's used here.
Yeah, it just is, it's such an unneighborly thing to do.
Yeah, it is.
And it's not, it's not that right.
You know.
Yeah, three lights and it's what, $400 and some odd dollars to have the assistance of public safety. Yeah.
But we did go ahead with the lights, and they never agreed.
Yeah, and two of the three lights actually are anchored on Columbus Township.
Oh, I say get the chainsaw.
Colin Eldren wrote us on the Casco side on the road. So, okay, I'll go talk to their supervisor. Okay, new business to a audit report. Mr. West there?
Good evening. Well, he probably recognized me. Maybe the end doesn't, but I've been here a few times before. I'm Wes Messing, I'm a CPA for King &amp; King CPA, so we came out in early June and conducted the annual audit for Casco Township as required by the state. Overall, I'll say our audit went well, we were able to find information that we needed, and the clerk and the treasurer were able to answer all the questions that we had during the time we were here. So we appreciate your help and cooperation to help us do our job. You have your audit reports, that covers just one fiscal year, March 31st, 2023. I also have provided, or you guys should have at your desk, a financial report, that's just one page, that has multiple years of information. Actually, I'm going to kind of talk about that a little bit more than the report itself. This has the information from that report on it, one of the columns, and then we have a few additional years, so we can kind of see some trends. So I'll talk about this briefly. If you have questions, feel free to interrupt, I'm happy to answer your questions. So the first section there is the general fund, obviously the main operating fund of the township. You can see that our fund balance, kind of the fifth line down, fund balance, which is kind of the equity that we have in that fund, all of our assets minus our liabilities, was about 1.7 million. We're in a, and you can see over the last five years that that has increased, each year over the last five years. So we're moving in the right direction from a financial aspect, we're not spending more than what we're bringing in. So that makes for a very healthy township financially. The revenue section is next. Property taxes, you can see that those have increased year over year. We're still seeing the tax base recover from '07 and '08, the heavily rollback and the 2% every year that it can come back, that's slowly still creeping its way up. You can see your licenses, permits, and fees line, a couple below that has like skyrocketed the last few years as there's more building permits being issued. That's going to increase your tax base, so that's just going to keep your property taxing going up as well. Those are good indications for the township. The intergovernmental revenues, that is your state revenue sharing, the sales tax that's distributed out to the townships, you can see that that's also increased every year. Other than the one in the middle, 2021, there was a small drop, that was COVID time, there was a very small drop in that time, but then it picked right back up where it left off and has kind of recovered.
The intergovernmental revenues, well, the revenue sharing, that's because of the economy more well, the sales tax.
Yeah, yeah, that's an indication of the economy, so that's all the sales tax that's collected in the state of Michigan and then redistributed out to townships.
They're not going to send townships more money.
Yeah, but as inflation happens, as we're seeing, the pricing of everything goes up, that the amount of sales tax they're collecting should go up, because that's a percentage of the price, and so that should allow for more money to come to the township and help cover your increasing costs, right? Because as we can see down in the next section, the expenses, your costs, it's good to see your revenue increasing year over year, but we also see that our expenses are increasing as well, year over year. A couple of years ago, you had the big hall renovation project of 150, a couple hundred thousand. So, and even in that year, we were still, we still added to our fund balance, so that's a great thing. So like I said, even though we have seen increasing costs over the last five years, your increases in revenues have more than covered those, and we still have kind of a surplus each year. Any questions on the general fund?
No, it's looking fairly healthy.
Yes. The next two are kind of our smaller funds, we have the park fund that has a fund balance as of March 31st of about $425,000. You can also see that we've added to that over the last five years. And I know that we're still pursuing grants and whatnot to fund our projects that we have coming up.
Well, we hopefully, I mean, we'll be starting our phase one and two of the park this late summer, or after, deadline for submission of bids will be this Friday.
Okay.
So.
We'll be using some of that money, so, yeah. How much other do we expect to use our prowess coming up here?
It'll be about $120,000, and we have to match the grants.
Did you get, isn't it $144,000?
Yeah, well, the two grant, the passport grant, we have to match it to a certain amount. I applied for a third one, a Spark grant, and if we get it, it'd be 100%, because that was our money, COVID money. That's where I get that number from, you, when we applied for that second round, so. But yeah, we got that, so, yeah, it'll be, I'd say roughly, we're going to be paying about 100 for that number take.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that fund is doing fine, especially if we have a cost like that coming up. That's generally the money that's in that fund, is what's come from the county, about $20,000 a year in maintenance that we have on the park each year. And then the last line or last section is our liquor law enforcement funds. It'd be a little bit of money every year from the state to enforce liquor licenses in the township, and we're holding about $17,000. No issues there.
Good work.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
You're welcome. We've found this to be useful, there's a lot of stuff in that report, but it only covers one year, and I know for me, anytime I look at a financial statement, I want to look at what was the last one, so I can see how it changed. So this gives us the ability to do that and see kind of a few years of information and help us identify presenting problems. From this, I can say financially, I don't see any issues for the township. Any other questions for me?
No.
All right, well, we thank you guys again for your cooperation. I see a little way down, we're going to talk about our funding contract, so I'll hand over to that.
Thanks.
Okay, good deal. Okay, do we have to do a motion to accept the audit report?
I believe so.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the audit report?
So.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion to support to accept the audit report. Okay, all in favor?
I think we should do roll call, because it's financial.
Right, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Stephen, yes.
Stephen, yes.
Okay, it's for A, motion carries. Quarterly budget update. There was, any questions on that?
I just want to bring to the attention, there's a couple accounts that are getting close to being used already, so we need to keep an eye on those, and you'll have to do.
Amendment, next one.
Yeah, like on page two of seven of that one, oh, that one, sorry. Okay, yeah, page two of seven, the government, the dues, so that's like MTA or any other memberships that we have, that's getting close, so.
Okay, I'll get with you tomorrow.
Just so we stay on top of it, so we don't.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. We can budget amendment certain years, so. All right, good, thank you. Okay, any question on the budget update? Do we need a motion for that, or?
I don't think so.
Okay, Matt Liebetrach, zone.
It has brought to my attention, or whatever, so maybe consider him for a raise.
Oh.
He hasn't had a raise since 2019. I would make a motion to give Mr. Liebetrach $20,000 in our, for his services.
Okay, I have a motion to support to increase the pay of our zoning administrator, Matt Liebetrach, that's why you got a lot of power. Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Stephen, yes.
Stephen, yes.
Good, motion carries, good, that was a good thing. All right, council on aging, this is a thing we get every year, and every year, I mean, they get part of the millage, so, I mean, they're asking us for a donation, I don't think we can donate something like that.
I believe we can, but I don't think we have that.
Yeah, no, we have, because they did millage, so, so, yeah, so.
I don't think we need to take any action on that, we just have to register.
I agree.
But basically, San Francisco is apparently one of the best aging support programs, whole spectrum of programs in the country.
And it's well-funded.
Okay, good deal, good deal, and that's good, they keep our senior citizens connected. Okay, the next one is code enforcement officer and attorney procedure. I wanted the board's approval on this, this is our new ordinance enforcement officer, Kurt, what he follows is the first one, he prints assessments, he makes sure the letters are being sent to the proper person, current owner, 14-day letter, letter, regular mail, second, 14-day, second note, certified mail, 10-day letter from the township attorney, Chris Anderson. After three letters are sent to the board of, the board of approval required for the filing, and a citation is written, sent to the homeowner, or search court proceedings are started through the township attorney, Christine Anderson. So Kurt uses this in his other community, and what I like about Kurt, he has a personal relationship operating with our township attorney, Chris Anderson, and I've been impressed with his so far.
Well, if that's what he wants, and that's how he operates, then.
Does this need to be a resolution or part of our ordinance, or is this just something that we can vote on?
I think it's something we can just vote on. If you think we should do a resolution, then we can.
I mean, we could vote on it today, and then I guess if we need to do a resolution or why not, we could.
I'll call Chris tomorrow to see if we need a resolution on it, and if we do, we'll do one next one, okay?
All right.
All right. Okay, so I'd like right now at least a vote of approval on this, and if I have a.
I'll make a motion to approve the Casco Township ordinance enforcement officer and attorney procedure.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to support to accept.
How overdue.
Yeah, ordinance enforcement officer attorney procedure. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, yeah, I was, the first, Kurt, his first morning now here, him and I, we met for about four hours, and we go around, and I pointed out certain areas that need attention. We're going to go, hold up first, unlicensed cars that's had a little damage to easily, so. Okay, so this is complaint form, I saw you guys had this on, and I also put our current one here.
This is just one that was on a website, so people could actually, it's like a fill-in form.
Oh, they go on a website?
They can go, if we do it, I mean, if they, when I first started as deputy clerk, we had it for people who wanted to do quota applications, they would fill this out and they'd get emails to me. So that would be like the same concept, where they could fill this out and maybe get emails to Kurt.
Okay, yeah.
If we want to do that, that way, you know, it's another way of someone sort of calling or whatever.
Yeah, you know, we, yeah, but online, I'd be up to it.
And it's simple, you know, it's just name, the address, like.
And so they could do it online, and, okay. I'd also like it for, Kurt always says, when we do ordinance enforcement, always a thing between ordinance enforcement officer and supervisor, so having sent both to me and Kurt, some of that stuff, sometimes I could take care of it with a simple home call or a visit, but, yeah, would you look into that?
I'll talk to Karen, because I'm sure she could whip something up and put down the website.
Sure. Okay, good deal. All right, we have Hi-Tech quote for laptop, or this is for Kurt, our enforcement officer. So this is the one, total cost, I mean, is $1,167.
Do you have a question about the cost? Now that I'm looking at this, he's got the monthly stuff on there, but that's going to be a monthly charge, shouldn't that be separate? Because it's, if we approve this as, let's see how it says on the bottom, $75, it's going to be a monthly. That's probably for the email, the, you know, ANI, all that, that we already, we pay for.
We pay for that. Yeah, that's kind of double-dipping, don't you think?
It seems so.
Yeah. So we could just approve the laptop minus the $75?
And then the other stuff should be put on the other stuff?
Yeah.
Even if it needs to be an addition to that, but you know what I'm saying? I don't like that it's on the laptop.
Okay.
How much are we paying for each, approximately for each of the other machines per month to get this kind of coverage, if you know?
Let me see, if I can pull up one here in the.
Where do we pay it, or do we pay by the machine, or do we pay by the?
We pay by the user.
By the user.
Let me look and see if I can find that next one. Monthly IT service, $1,125. That's for our contact with them, so that they can do whatever IT stuff that we need done, plus all the monthly, the, you know, the Microsoft outlet.
Does that include that block of time we?
No, the block of time is a separate thing that we buy.
Does it all, also include all of the threat monitoring?
Yes.
It does?
Yes, yes. If you look at this invoice.
This seems like a mistake in certain way.
If you look at this invoice, it has on there, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth thing down, it says the phishing threat. It's two bucks a month.
But there's also anti-spam, other kinds of remote monitoring, and if we already have that.
Well, this would be for him, do you know what I'm saying? Because it's by the user.
Yeah, the cost seems a little high for another single other user, but maybe.
We could, like I said earlier, we could just approve the laptop, any question about the $79, the $75? Could ask about that.
So the $75 includes, I'm thinking that $150 for the Microsoft, that's not included in the $75,
Anyone have any suggestions?
I can quote it again, quote the monthly separately, and then quote the laptop separately.
Okay.
So we better figure out.
He needs his laptop.
Yeah, we need to get current.
He needs a laptop.
Oh, he needs, yes, but.
Then approve the laptop, not to exceed, not to exceed the amount.
Okay, all right, good deal, so you're making that?
Sure.
Okay, $1,167?
That includes all that other stuff, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't want to do it for that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the laptop for the foundation cost of the laptop, excluding all of the.
The monthly?
Monthly services.
Okay.
But I'm not sure what that amount would be.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, you have support for that?
Support.
Okay, a motion to support to purchase a laptop or a code enforcement officer? Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Stephen, yes.
Stephen, yes.
Okay, or, yes, the motion carries. Okay, Hi-Tech came in here, they need to put a drop in for down in the basement for a code enforcement officer. Luckily, of the two, they were able to use the least expensive one, for $650.
I'll make a motion to take that bid for $650 from Hi-Tech.
I'm sure about it, but I'll support it because we need it.
Yeah, a motion to support to accept the bid for Hi-Tech to put a dent drop down into the basement?
Seems like a lot of money to put in, to put in a couple of bucks.
Well, and I had an idea, I don't know if you guys are liking that, but what if he goes in Roland's office?
What's that?
What if he goes in Roland's office one day a week? Because Roland, I mean.
I don't know how Roland would feel about that. Would save us.
Might be, might be worthwhile to talk to Hi-Tech and ask them why they gave that for quite $720.
It just is.
We've given a lot of money, we like them.
Right.
And see what the deal is.
Well, he came today and he showed me in the basement, and they had to go through the ceiling and do this and that, and wiring, so it's probably labor cost.
Well, yeah, it's never as easy as we think it's going to be, because we're not technicians.
I think, like, we're doing the addition, we're all, you know, this is going to be like just $650 that we use for, you know, a short period of time, but.
This is a thousand bucks, a thousand bucks for two.
You're right about that.
For two, right, like change in the future.
Gee, if we could just get this guy to work on Fridays. Nobody's in the office.
Right.
I mean, I guess Kurt, he even needs my office, but. Kurt, he said I have a cell phone? Or, I mean, a township cell phone would be cheaper than a home. No, he has to go online.
It has to.
Oh, yeah, there's a program he has to do his work on. So, but we have to get him an operation, though.
As for a short period of time, I don't know, I suppose we should consult Roland about this and see how he feels, or it would save us some money.
Job is offered up here.
Yeah, I remember, he can do it at my office.
Well then, but it's problem solved, he's doing it in our office. $650 for a short-term use is a lot of money.
Because he'll be usually here on Tuesday, that's where he does his office work.
That's good, you can go out and water the plants. Thank you.
Okay.
Good, problem solved.
All right, so we're not going to approve?
No, to Hi-Tech, no.
All right, we have here, okay, right, okay, the next one here, we have three invoices from Pam Blau. The one is IA is for the Spark grant application for $3,725 cents. The second one is for the grant application for Base 3, that's for our trust fund grant, we're going to take the roads back to the river, is for $2,305. And the other one is for Spark grant application assistance for $500.
Do we need to make separate motions, or can we do it all?
I think we could do it all in one.
Just list the invoices that we're paying, and then we'll be fine.
All right, I make a motion that we approve those three invoices for the amounts listed.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to pay the amount of three invoices sent by Pam Blau Incorporated for park development. Okay, we have motion support, okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Stephen, yes.
Stephen, yes.
Motion carries.
Pardon the interruption, but I just looked under the cost of CAT 6 Caden crops. Look on the internet, take a look at that, and maybe talk to them about that, because it doesn't seem like it is.
Well, we don't even.
Especially, especially.
But it's going to come up in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems like there's quite a lot of information about what these things really cost out there.
Okay.
Well, it's all about, no one would just put.
Yeah, it's, we could, we could use my office, that'd be fine, do this work. All right, this is, our next one is 2J Nickel and Sapp, our annual premium renewal for $11,714, including terrorism, we took it last year because of our ransomware, so we just considered that we're going to have it from now on?
It's necessary.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I just put it on separately because they're too kind of.
Yeah. Nickel and Sapp, Steve Sapp, whenever I call him, he's available, I think he could work for us.
I make a motion to renew the annual premium at a cost of $11,714.
Support.
Okay, to include the terrorism, sure, $103.
And then with the, yes.
Okay, we have motion support to. Okay, we have motion su- support to, um, to pay the annual renewal premium to Nickel and Sapp for eleven thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Plus the terrorism, one hundred and three dollars. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Steven chess.
Stover, yes.
For a motion carries. Okay, next one is Castleton. Do we have to pay the taxes on the Meisner Road property?
I make a motion to pay the taxes on the Meisner Road property.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to pay taxes on the Meisner Road property for one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six cents. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Steven chess.
Stover, yes.
Yes. Okay, good deal. Motion carries. Okay, county, County of St. Clair EMS Village.
That's you.
We have, um, opened up a new account at the bank, uh, simply to, um. Solidify our funds being sent to us by the county. It's a county village. Uh, we received it all in one lump sum. I'm still not, um, certain how this is going to be distributed and I'm a little, um. I, we, I had to review the process because when I, um. When I send the county their village money, uh, which I do bi-weekly during the tax season. Everything else is sent right up to the county. Senior citizens, whatever, whatever, the four, five, six villages that we have. Um, so I was a little surprised that EMS was not included in that disbursement right up to the county. But that simply is because we have a choice of who we select. And so that money comes back to us. And when they bill us, they will do that through the clerk's office. She will get the invoice. And, um, Jennifer will, um, EFT that money over to them. So we don't have to pay for checks. Yes, as lo- as long as we have Richmond money.
Yeah.
And we could change that at any time if a new, uh, if a new, um, service comes online that we prefer. But I think that's why they did that.
Yeah.
You know, anything else, the, the county would have just taken it up, dispersed it out, but since we have that choice.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's how it was explained. Everybody would know should be sent to communities and then the community sends it to them.
Yeah, yeah.
So is Jeff White going to, do we have to contact him?
I would think Jeff White.
Would be on top of that.
Would be on top of it.
I'm sure he would.
One would think.
Yeah.
I, and so I just, the, the thing is, I don't know. This is ninety-two thousand some odd dollars. I just want to know, are we going to be emptying that account at one time? Or is he going to bill us monthly, quarterly, whatever it is?
The account?
Yeah. Because we, we'll pay for the maintenance of that account at probably thirty-five dollars a month. Like we do the general fund. And, um, if that was so, then I would just, you know, I would. I don't, I don't like to have that account out there and then drained all at one time. But we'll just have to see how he's going to do that. He's not going to get billed all at one time for everything.
Right.
So I'm hoping that we can earn a little bit of.
Yeah, it was, St. Clair County was the last county in Michigan to have, uh. Matter of fact, um, meds, I mean, tri hospital EMS, they were losing, you know, like a million dollars a year. They were going to have to close garages and Cape Town and Yale.
Yeah.
So it was well deserved that what, Richard Linux EMS, they cover some St. Clair, um, county, townships and communities. They got on board helping them. Even though they get money from the Com County. This will also provide additional services for our residents and that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
I just, we're just going to have to wait and see how this gets billed out.
Yeah, I'll pound around and see if he can answer that.
Okay, good deal. Okay, King and King invoice for seven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
Make a motion to pay King and King invoice for this year's spot. Thank them very much for their services.
Thank you.
Okay, we have motion support to pay the King and King, um, invoice for seven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Steven chess.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion for yes and motion carries. Okay, um. Okay, we have the contractor, King and King CPA LLC.
I have a question for you, Wes, since you're here.
Yep.
So we got notification from the state that because our revenue, whatever, something fell. We don't have to do an audit every year. We can do it every other year.
So that's based on the number of residents that you have.
Residents.
So if, so you're now, this was the last census, less than four thousand? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the threshold. If you have less than four thousand residents, you would then only be required by the state to have an audit every other year rather than every year. So if the township wanted to go that route, you could and no longer have an audit every year. I, I wasn't aware that you dropped below that number, so, um. You would still have to do, there's a, the form F sixty-five that is some financial data that gets submitted. That form still has to be done every year. Uh, the, the qualifying statement form has to be done every year, no matter what. Uh, which we could still help you with those forms in the off-year if you chose to go that route. Uh, and then you would pick, do you want, when you want to start that? I mean, you could start it, you could confirm it with the state, with the finance division if they're, if you got the letter, I assume you could start that immediately.
Well, we could have skipped this year, but because we switched, um, um.
Yes.
Tyler Tech Balance Fund Balance, whatever, the S and A, we figured it was, it was, you know.
And there's, there's some that we do that are every other year like that. That they still have us come out and kind of do a closing of the books.
Okay.
But it's not a full audit.
Okay.
The price is significantly less because we're not doing a full audit.
Okay.
Uh, but we would still come out, uh, and we would still review all your balances. We'd make any adjustments that need to be made, like we have done in the audit. It's more so purely just to help you close your books so that you can make sure on the year that we do come and do an audit. You have kind of a fresh start for that year versus us coming out after two years. And then we've got kind of two years of things to clean up and adjustments to make and things to look at. So it, it helps us because we can help you close your books every year. And it helps you guys because you know every year you're going to have somebody kind of do at least a limited review of, of your finances. If you'd like us to put together a proposal for that, I certainly can do that.
Let's say we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would guess that it's probably going to be. Your aud- the year, the audit year would be similar to what we proposed there, but the compilation, it's called a compilation. That off-year is probably going to be twenty-five to fifty percent less.
Okay.
On what the, of the, an audit year, so.
And then the population on the US census. I mean, we're.
So if you go to census.gov and you look at what the population is for.
We're at like three thousand nine hundred and ninety, I think.
Yeah, we're like right there.
Then what if you have any babies for ten years?
I take it they're renovating the trailer park. I imagine in the twenty, thirty censuses, it's going to.
Well, no, about the building.
I can get that put together for you.
That would be great. So do we want to just, um.
Yes, please.
Postpone this.
So we can look at that and mull that over.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're going to postpone on doing the contract.
So.
Okay.
Would you, sorry to interrupt. The one that we proposed was for five years. Would you like that new contract to still cover five years? Which would mean that would cover two audits, basically every other year if you're going to start that immediately. You have three years of the compilation or lesser service than two years.
Yes, that would help greatly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good. I'm glad we're here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
All right. Any other questions on this?
No.
Okay, next one is Mike Commission ZBA training material. Um, Steve Kasson told me, I asked him what books he, he says that he has several communities. Planning zoning essential workbook from the Michigan Association of Planning, which Steve is a member. He could get a cost for thirty dollars. That's half the cost of the MTA and it comes out to three hundred and sixty dollars total.
Do we have any of these MTA books?
Um, I don't think so.
What if we just get one? And go, you know, have them do those, but get one of these two?
Okay.
Just to have an office of reference.
Right. Okay, no problem. So we're going to give one, one of the.
MTA one.
Okay, one and then we'll get twelve of the ones here. And Steve could, uh, Steve will, uh, order them for us.
Twelve is enough for everybody on both floors?
Yeah. Yeah, twelve. Okay, we have another seven. I know we need, we need thirteen of them because we have all of that out of the ZBA.
Maybe fourteen, keep another one of those in the office.
Yeah, okay. Fourteen then. So that comes to three hundred and, uh. So that comes to what, four?
Four twenty.
Four twenty, okay. Four hundred and twenty dollars. Plus the sixty dollars for the MTA one. So that's four hundred and eighty dollars. Okay. And this also too is a motion also with this is to pay the members, the technicians on the water field. Who showed up at the meeting, uh, training on August thirtieth. Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we have motion support.
Good thing we did.
Okay, we have motion support, uh, for, um, for the books and for the, to pay the planning commissioners and the onboard appeals officials. For the training on August thirtieth, Wednesday. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Steven chess.
Stover, yes.
Okay, for yes and motion carries. And it's good that we have this, last time we had two years and you always, in the military, it was called, and celebrate your training. Trying to learn the basics and that, so hopefully you, trying to get all these members together is like trying to herd cats. Okay, all right, I'd like to appoint Mr. Dennis Hocke as the township representative to the NEMC.
Support.
Well, he can't do a motion.
Pardon?
He can't do a motion.
Oh, that's right.
I'll make a motion and then you can support my motion.
Okay.
Can we, um. Two things. So he's taking over Wayne's shot.
Yeah.
And we don't need any kind of resignation from Wayne or it just, we just point.
Yeah, Wayne already.
His hands on it.
Right.
Something like that. Um, and then another thing, um, is there a way like he could just type up a recorder?
Sure.
And just put it in a board pack, but we don't need, probably even need to put it on the.
Consent agenda.
In FYI.
And I.
Because we're not really, you don't need to vote.
And I, I'll, I'll put the NEMC minutes in the board pack as well.
Okay, and then if we have questions, we can.
Yeah, so we have two. We have Bob Kettle and we have Dennis there. I go, I've been going to them, trying to learn this, um. At the training there, I won't, at the ZBA, I won't make it because on August thirtieth, they're going to be having a meeting. They want all supervisors and mayors there in the consortium, trying to get a handle on these franchise fees. Comcast is not an easy company to work for.
Really?
Yeah, like they're supposed to provide these what we call page sheets and for some reason they, I guess Bill would continuously rank them. And he would find the information. But yeah, it's just, you think they'd be forthcoming for that. And we're not alone. It's all the communities that are in trouble with Comcast. So. Okay, we have, um, okay, a motion.
Elon Musk could do something.
A motion to approve Dennis Hocke as the township NEMC representative. We have support. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion pays. Okay, plans for hall expansions. We had Mr. Chris Russell draw us up for plans to expand the hall. The primarily to have more office space, but mainly to have an ADA voting.
A precinct, yeah.
Because we have one up here and we had some in the basement and their basement's not ADA capable. So this is, uh, it's going to be out this way. It's going to pretty much pull up our property, but it's going to make operations much easier when it comes to voting and, and other stuff too as well. So. So you think we should, oh. Do you want to have a follow-up?
I'm not sure I know where everything, you can hate to be so weak there. I'm not sure I know where everything is on this.
It's out there.
He didn't change.
It's out there.
Yeah, no.
He didn't change like the current stuff. He didn't change any of that.
No, there's a proposed hall. There's no supervisor's office and.
Supervisor's office.
Supervisor's office.
Okay, well.
This guy, I don't even, I don't get it.
Well, right here is only for the addition. Once this gets built, we're going to rearrange the walls in the existing area, but you need to put up temporary offices in the, the new hall. So they do it. That's easy.
Okay, this hall will become offices?
No, no, this will stay the same.
Yeah, this will still be.
This will stay the same, the, the existing offices will be reconfigured.
And that's, so what, what's the proposed hall?
Okay, the new one is from here over. It's, it'll be out this way.
And there'll be two halls.
Yeah.
This one and that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, really called, but.
Two meeting areas.
Or a, like a rest area, whatever.
Yeah.
And a secure election closet where our, all of that sort of thing.
And then, once we get it all situated, we're going to have like a counter up here. And people aren't going to be able to just walk in like leaving now because that's not.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's.
It's, it will have a separate entrance for the treasurer, assessor, clerk. It'll, it'll be kind of a separate operation there. The building department will have much more open space and room to move.
Yeah, the building will be secure, like Jennifer said.
Because that's where the growth spurt is going to be, in the building department and in elections. I don't think the treasurer's office is going to. There's so much done at the banks and online and all of that sort of thing. We miss, we miss our clients coming in door, bringing fruit and candy and.
Cheese.
So my, my question is on this. Do you want to approve this right now and, um, have Chris start doing formal plans?
Well, if we want to get anything done.
I would like to get the.
By the.
By November. Twenty twenty-four because I know it's not.
We drag our feet on this.
Yeah.
Will be, will be.
All right.
In mud and concrete.
And we've already met and if everybody is good with this, why, why do a plan?
You two ladies, that's your, your property workspace and it's good. Okay, all right, so I mean, some needs to make a motion to, um. So Mr. Russell could start drawing up formal plans. Well, I guess he would have to submit to us a price for that.
Yeah, yes.
So.
And that's done pretty much per square foot.
Right.
That's how he, you know, the problem will not be that. The problem will be getting a builder.
Yeah.
And the data drops. That's it.
So yes, I will make a motion that we, um, contact him.
And have him send us a.
Have him.
Bid.
A bid?
Yeah.
A quote? Yes.
Okay.
Can we do a quote? I guess we have to approve that.
Yeah.
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 I'll support it.
Okay, a motion support to authorize Mr. Chris Russell to submit a bid for us for formal plans for our hall expansion project. I guess we have to do a roll call vote on this, huh?
Yeah, Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Danny, yes.
Uh, Steven chess?
Stover, yes.
Okay, good deal. All right. Okay, citizens' comments. Is there any, does anyone want to comment on any issue?
I have a comment.
Sure.
Judging by the phone calls that my office got today. We are going to be deluged as we always are when the drain commission comes out with new drains. we always are, when the Drain Commission comes out with new drains. My best advice would be to tell the residents to call the Drain Commissioner. We are not experts on this, it has to be explained that even though the people who are receiving these letters might not be able to see the ditch that's being cleaned or where it is, et cetera, they have to know that the Drain Commission has already looked at this problem, they have determined the amount of land that the residents are draining, might be whatever it is, but my point is, this is best to come from the Drain Commission themselves, they are more than welcome to call the Drain Commission office, they try to be as very helpful as they can, they try to answer all the questions. We're not expert at that and they are, there are multiple drains here, they go for section to section to section and back up again, trying to explain that to people. It, it's not our field of expertise, let the Drain Commissioner do that, that is why his phone number is on those letters and not ours.
Can we, lady tomorrow, can you like do like a little paragraph or something, I'll put it on our Facebook page and we'll have her.
Yes, we, we already had multiple calls.
I had multiple calls on my phone too.
Well, that's, don't, I don't want you explaining drains to these people, that is the Drain Commissioners, you will do nothing but that for the next seventy-two hours if you attempt that.
I added individuals, what, totally went a hundred thousand.
Don't, that, that's right, so.
From what I understand, the Drain Commission even has trouble.
And they do.
Formulas that they.
They do, but it is their formula and it, it needs to be explained by them, if they cannot defend their thought process, then who are we to do that? We get the same, we, we get those drain bills too and we have to figure out how advantageous this is to us, are they going to clean out the whole drain? No, they're not, they're going to clean out a portion of the drain to alleviate some stress here or there. People will say, well, I got a bill for this and I never saw any, you know, I never saw any work being done, maybe that's because it was two miles away in another section and that's for the Drain Commission to explain, not us. I, I just don't wanna give bad information, false information.
Right.
And, and false hopes, right? That's, let the experts do that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on citizen comments? Okay, board comments, I have a few things here, I have to be here at two PM on Friday to receive bids for contractors wishing to apply for the phase one, two of the park contract, I'll be here from noon to two and I have to do a public reading of the bids because contractors will wanna know if they bidded high and if there's other people bidding low, they say, well, heck, I'm gonna go look for other work than that, so. We had one person submit a bid, he took it back because he heard about the extension, so.
Oh, that was, yes.
Yeah, so they, so I'll be here from noon to two and I, I need to see if anyone had dropped anything in the quotes in the, like, Friday morning, have to learn how to open that and.
There's a chance.
Okay, okay. I need to know where to key that, for phase one.
Phase, phase one.
And the, the amounts on the bids are public, are in the public domain?
Yeah.
They're not, they're not sealed bids?
No.
They'll come, I open them up, I read them and it'll give the contractors, they know where they stand, if they bidded really high, they say, well, heck, I'm never gonna be chosen, so they can go look for, for elsewhere. I guess that's standard practice on this stuff.
Well, yeah, but one bid is, you have to, you have to compare apples to apples.
And whatever bids, all the bids will be brought here to board meeting for, for approval, but I have to do this, it's a requirement to do that, so.
All right.
Okay. Another thing is construction on the Church Road Bridge over the Rome Creek has started, started last week and they, it's scheduled to be done by September twelfth, I'm in contact with the Director of Transportation from Richmond Schools, because they wanna know when it's open so they can readjust their bus routes. So yeah, they're starting to dig that out and hopefully, it's gonna be an aluminum arch bridge in there, so it's gonna be the same level of the road, it's gonna be how it currently is, so.
An aluminum arch bridge?
So like a culvert.
Like the one.
What's that? So maybe like a culvert. Yeah.
The one that's on St. Clair Highway?
No, 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 it's gonna be, the material's like the culvert, the material, the steel, how they have the culverts, but it's just gonna be a large arch on there.
All right.
Yeah, I went to a meeting about a few weeks ago up at the Road Commission on this, I thought it was gonna be concrete, but no, just aluminum arch.
All right.
As long as it's made out of steel and, yeah, that's been an episode and I had to redo that gas line and that, I had so many people on Church Road call me up, I said, so it's gonna be there or they're gonna pull that gas line under? Okay, the Road Commission is finishing up ditching on B three road and they gotta clean out, there's a culvert underneath St. Clair Highway there in B three road, once they get that open. Now, they cleaned the ditch north of St. Clair Highway, B three road, the unimproved version part, it hadn't been cleaned in like sixty years, that shoot up a little bit more money than the Road Commission thought, but they should be done this week and then I'll sit down with Mike, I'll get with Mike's input, so we'll figure out how much, because we need to start on Springbourn Road and we have a couple of areas here, small, that we need.
They're not turning the corner on St. Clair Highway and going, what's that direction?
East, east or west?
No.
East.
North Richmond or east here? Although, if you notice on the ditch they cleaned on north of, the water is hell, high, Mike has taken the county drain that runs along the old railroad bed, there's a blockage, he's having the Drain Commission look into it, free it up, that should drain right on down, but some reason that, it's holding water and he believes it's in the county ditch of backup somewhere or something. So, but yeah, hopefully we'll get that done, either.
We start on Springbourn.
Yeah, next month, I've been talking to Mike about what we're gonna do for our match grant next year, this year we did ditching, he's saying we need to do another mile of St. Clair Highway over there, so, but I will.
I'd rather do ditching.
I was gonna say, if there's something else that's a bigger priority, because I don't think that.
I don't think that's so bad, I mean, I've, I've driven on roads in China, this kind of township, much worse than that.
Well, I'll get with Mike and we'll, we'll discuss this more.
Yeah.
I wish I could have a, we had the funds, had the crew there continuously doing ditching projects, that'd be great, that'd be awesome, so. Okay, is there anything else? Cause we're up for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good meeting.